This is what happens without an assistant city manager.[18.48][18.48](laughter)
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. All right, we'll call this meeting to order. We've got the work session for the charter. And Councilmember Fears and Councilmember McCandless worked very, very hard of actually going item by item with the law department. So I want to thank all of you for your work on that regard. And that'll be the foundation of how we proceed. I know a lot of people have further questions about it, but if it's okay, I'll just turn the floor over to you and basically let you run it.
Yeah.
And say, "This is what we found out, and this is how we want to proceed, and these are the things we've talked about," if that's okay.
Sure, sure. So as mentioned in the memo, Bridgette and I, after the presentation by the Charter Review Commission, went through and began to kind of go through and double-understand things for ourselves, talked with Jeremy there, Suzanne, kind of kept our minutes for us so that we could keep track of what we were thinking and moving along. And Jeremy answered a lot of questions and took things to the -- back to the ground board and did a little research on when we needed to. And so, you know, I put together this memo just to kind of summarize the discussion that we had gone through and give you guys something to begin to chew on. You know, as Bridgette already mentioned, you know, we were really very pleased with the work of the commission, had very few areas that we disagreed with or, you know, really had any substantive changes. We didn't really wordsmith the red-line version, we didn't feel the need to do that. We did, in a couple places, found minor things that we gave, you know, minor grammatical issues or something like that, that we gave to Jeremy, and he was kind of keeping track of that for us. And so, you know, I guess what I would say is, you know, as we went through this, we just kind of, you know, tried to address, or what I tried to do in the memo is address those things that I thought that the council might want to discuss in greater detail. And the biggest question becomes, I think, in our mind, was, you know, what do we send to the voters in the way of language for the ballots? We kind of came down with three general ballot questions. One being a question that just really updated all the language, you know, with all the red-line changes, and moved a whole bunch of stuff to the city code, created some probably parts of the city code that we don't currently have. And Jeremy's kind of got all that, you know, he's got a handle on all that, I think. And so, that was one question we thought. We thought another question, another question would be regarding the primary, whether that we thought that's probably something that the voters should weigh in on because it's significant enough. And then another question would be to address the public utility question. Not so much relative to, you know, the -- it allowed to, the language put the public utility section in the code is the proposal, and we agree with that part, but we think we need to put something in there that states that, you know, no public utility is going to be sold without a vote of the people. And that so the people get to weigh in on that piece of it. So those are kind of our general sense of the three different questions that we might move forward with. We did not try to craft any language on that. We figured we needed to have this discussion tonight before we went any further in that regard. We did then, the first thing we did really when we met is we went through the memo from Jackie Summer to the council with all the recommendations. And by and large, we agreed with most of that. We agree that we don't really, or we don't believe that we ought to change the boundaries at this point, given that we just made changes due to the 2020 census.
And this is a point of clarification, excuse me, is the boundaries of the four --
Four districts, correct.
Council districts.
Yeah, four council districts, that's correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah. So that's, that was our thinking on that at the present. That could also always be addressed later on in, you know, future charter review commissions. But we agree not to address the number of council persons at this time. We think that's, you know, a future discussion. Jeremy went through and researched the best way to handle the addition of the items to the city code. And so, he suggested a couple of different options in that regard. One was to pass the code changes with an effective date of basically roughly a week following the election date so that we could then, if for some reason it didn't pass, we could go back and undo all of that, those code changes. The other option would be to have a special meeting immediately following the, you know, the election. And if we did that, then, you know, we would have to have everything all ready to go. And, you know, our thought would be it'd be better to do it ahead of time and have it all with a date, you know, a week or so after the election, and then we undid it if something failed, as opposed to trying to, you know, jam it all in, you know, right, right, you know, right there, you know, in the week in between or right after the election. So, you want to say something on that?
Yeah. So if it was the will of the body that we did it the week after, so we don't make any of the code changes until the charter gets decided, if that were the case, we would have prepared the language, and it would be on the information portion of each meeting for multiple meetings. So people would have lots of time to read it, prepare, digest that before it came up because we will have a time crunch, and I don't want anybody to feel like they got bamboozled with what moves into the code.
Right, good point.
So that was our recommendation.
Good point. So that's kind of our thinking relative to the part on the code and how that might, you know, I mean, I think ideally we would have, you know, time, you know, following when we, whenever we put it on the ballot to, up to then, to have several, you know, study sessions and other things and other discussions, maybe town halls, whatever, where we could make it available to people so, and then try to pass it before the election. I think that makes more sense. But we, you know, we just had that discussion. So I think you could do it either way, but that's just our thought.
One concern with doing it in advance is that you have to take the exact language out of the charter and put it in the ordinance so you don't have any discrepancy between the two, which also means none of that can be modified.
Right.
So that's the push and the pull of before or after. You know, it'll really depend on Jeremy's opinion on, are there small tweaks that need to be made before it goes into ordinance? Or we've been operating basically under the system of the charter up until this point, the language is good enough?
Right.
And you can make modifications at some future date. So really, that's going to be advice from you.
I mean, I will tell you, any of these options are plausible and reasonable. It really is just what you all think is the best approach. There's not, I mean, there, I will say, I mean, there are pros and cons to all of them. I mean, I think that the key is that the legwork on this is done in advance regardless of whether or not you end up passing it in advance and then potentially repealing it or modifying it, or if you just have it in, you know, ready to go and then pass it after the fact. I think that's the most important part, is that we do, you know, we have all of that ready to go, one way or the other. Whether it's before or after, I mean, I said, I, it's, none of them are the cleanest options. I mean, because, you know, ideally, we would have time afterwards, but that's not how the charter currently works. Once those changes are approved by the voters, they go into effect, right? So, you know, the alternative to all of this is we just wait and see what happens and then go through that process. But obviously, there's going to be a decent amount of, assuming that at least, you know, how, depending on how this is presented to the voters, you know, a big chunk of this is approved. It's going to take quite some, you know, some work to get all this properly integrated to make sure we don't have, you know, some of this, because some of it's already in the code, so we don't want to just duplicate it. Some of this is essentially copy and paste from the charter as-is, that's what has been recommended and talked about. Some of it is, you know, is addressed in the charter now but should be different in the code. And that's where we can't have, you know, if it was just about copying and pasting entirely, where we think this should be in the code, and if it comes out of the charter, okay. But if that was the case, we could do it all in advance. But that's not what we have here. We have this mix currently of different, you know, different pieces that some are consistent with the charter right now and some of it isn't. And so, if, you know, if we're going to do all of it, then we can't just do all of it entirely in advance, approve it, put it in the code right now, because we can't have the code that's inconsistent with the charter. So that's where, you know, there's not just one clean option, but you, it really comes down to whether or not you pass this before and then we address it immediately after, you know, if needed. Or if you don't want to pass it before, we just do the legwork, and then it's ready to go immediately following the election for you all to take action on that point. So it's really a, either one works, it really comes down to your preference.
And just to clarify, the third question, which was the utilities, I think we need to discuss whether that is a completely separate issue that is tied to the vote so that the charter changes at the same time that that vote is made, as opposed to moving any of the utility information out of it during the time that the original charter is voted on.
Yeah, I looked at that a little bit more following our discussion on that. And my reaction is, is that, you know, if we're pulling all the other departments out of the charter, it'd be really kind of weird to leave that one department in there, you know, for, you know, public utilities or power and light or, it's public utilities as a whole. So I think that would be kind of strange, but, I mean, we could do it, it could be done. But my thought would be, it would be better to, you know, just add language that said, you know, let's, you know, that just specifies that before any utility could be sold, then it has to go to a vote of the people. And then that, that kind of takes all the guesswork out. Now, whether that's a separate question or whether it's part of the first item, I don't know, you get a little bit of chicken and egg kind of thing there because what if question one passes, that changes all the language, but question three does not pass? I guess then that says it doesn't have to go to the vote of the people. But, you know, that would work, I guess, as well. I don't think it'd be ideal, but I think everybody, that seems like a kind of a no-brainer. I don't think that people would be too opposed to that, but that's just, I'm just kind of talking, so.
Anybody, any thoughts on that?
Well, you know, a lot of this is going to come down to the politics of getting this passed. And these are substantive changes that we need to move ahead to be able to do good work. By splitting that issue and having it at the same time as the charter, I think that will cause a lot of confusion and uproar that isn't helpful.
So what would you want to do, leave that public utility paragraph in the charter?
I think you can take the, so the governing language around having a utility department out, just like you take everything else out. But in there is language saying that we shall have an electric utility, and you leave that alone until that comes up at the time of vote for sale or no sale.
Yeah. Any thoughts, Jeremy, on?
Or Dan?
Or anybody else?
Go ahead, Dan.
I, Rory's been talking about doing that for a while, having a provision that says we won't sell a utility without a public vote. And as I've been thinking about this in the bigger picture of, do we package the charter as a one-vote item or break out separate questions on top of it? I am drawn more and more to the idea of having just one charter question, period. And including a provision like that may actually help us sell the whole thing as a package, something like that. It changes nothing, practically speaking. It doesn't change what our intent is anyway, but it certainly brings a lot of comfort to people that are afraid that we are just going to sell the utility as a council, just make that decision for them. So I think, I think it would be something we need to seriously consider. Just put a simple clause in that says, you know, there must be a public vote, you know, a simple majority to sell a city-owned utility. And I think if we do that, that in itself will frankly help.
Lower the temperature.
It will lower the temperature and actually help carry the day on.
It could.
On the rest of the changes in the, that we're making the rest of the charter.
I mean, you all know I agree with that, so.
Right.
Where we put it and how the question is.
Yeah.
I want to be sure we always include Bryce. Do you have anything you want to add to that, Bryce?
Oh, I do. So I want to make sure I'm clear. Dan, what you're recommending is that it actually goes into charter itself, a change to the charter, that we can't sell a public utility without a vote?
Yes.
Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, that's what we're saying.
Okay, I just want to make sure I was understanding. So, yeah, I agree with that, we need that in there.
Yeah.
And we were thinking about you when we did that, so.
No, I'm sure you were.[1101.41][1101.41](laughter)
But I just, I think, Councilmember, I think it's just so important that for, an asset like that, that the voters get to decide. That's my, that's my personal opinion, and obviously, I believe all the colleagues here, I can't speak for them, and we're not taking a vote tonight, but I just think it's so important that we do that, that let the voters decide. It's their asset, it's their, it's their resource.
Well, so, I mean, I like that idea. I just, you know, the whole one-question thing, I mean, I don't know, because if we just put one question on there for the entire charter, if it fails, it fails, and we don't get anything. So, yes.
That's my, that'd be my worry as well.[1145.54][1145.54](laughter)
That's correct. I mean, if it's all, if it's all one question, then it's, then it's a, you know, up or down vote on that, on that one question. It wouldn't, it wouldn't prevent us from going, you know, back again.
Right.
To a different election, certainly, but it wouldn't, you know, nothing would change at that point in time.
Right.
All right.
How do you, you know, the problem we've got is how do you break it up? Right? Like, how are you going to dice this thing up? Are we going to have one question per article? Are we gonna, you know, every 10 pages is about, like, that's the other problem.
Yeah.
And frankly, voters aren't going to read it anyway.
Right. We discussed that, and, I mean, we didn't think you'd have one for every article, we just didn't think that made sense.
Right.
But, you know, that's why we kind of ended up at three questions.
Yeah.
But, you know, obviously, we're willing to, we're happy to discuss, that's just kind of where we were in the.
Yeah, and, you know.
In our discussion. I mean, it's a matter of.
Right.
Pros and cons in every direction, you know.
It is.
I do think there's other ways, if that's where you all end up, there are other, there are other chunks you could have, where it doesn't have to be, you know, one question per article, but, you know, some articles sort of naturally go together and, you know, could be chucked together so we, you know, you, we could end up with, you know, three or four questions or something like that. If that, if you thought that was more, more palatable, where, you know, you've got, okay, all this sort of, you know, kind of, you know, administrative stuff that maybe, you know, a lot of people aren't really going to care about, and then you've got, okay, here, you know, you get, you know, maybe this is kind of more controversial, so we're going to make it a smaller, a smaller chunk and, and not, you know, really group anything with it or something, you know, things that go together, something like that. So, I mean, it, there are other ways it could be, we could break it up if that's, if you like that, instead of, so not, not one big question, but not every article gets its own question either.
The challenge, as we looked at it, was that so many of the articles have references in other articles, and so, you know, they're just kind of, it sure would make it tough to, I mean, to wordsmith something that and put it into a, you know, a question in that way. I think that would be really challenging. But I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, you're, I mean, you are right. So we'd have to take that into account with the ones we're grouping together in terms of, you know, making sure that to the extent there are any correlations between, you know, that we wouldn't want that between questions, because we wouldn't want to be in a situation where something gets changed because question one gets approved, so it gets changed here, and somehow that is inconsistent with, you know, a different question that doesn't get approved. So we'd have to take that into account when we kind of decided which chunks they go to, if that's the direction you all want to go.
Right, right.
I, I do have a couple, some other proposed, kind of small changes, so we can circle back to our big questions if you guys will indulge me. 13-2 and 13-3 both require legal notices go to the mayor, and I think we ought to substitute, we ought to take that out and have that go to the city manager. Unless I was looking at, unless I was looking at an old copy or something.
Yeah, I get no, I get no issue with that.
You were not looking, I mean, that's, that's current language now, there had not been a recommendation on that.
Yeah.
So far.
Yeah.
Or maybe it should go, a notice should go to the city clerk, maybe. I'm just thinking out loud.
City manager. If we're getting sued, it should go to the head cheese.
I was just thinking of where you give notice, but that's fine, I think. Yeah.
I don't know if anybody has thoughts on that, who cares?
I think that's fine.
Yeah. I don't, you know, elected officials change, and that's really not in our realm particularly.
You're looking at what's, would be proposed 13.2 and 13.3, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, just make sure we're on the same page.
Yeah. 13.1 sort of defines he and she. I looked at some of the uses of that throughout. I think we can just remove that, and the places that he and she, where that is used throughout, I think we can go genderless. I think we can just use the terms where it's used. Typically, it's like in place of the clerk or the position that the term is in, place of.
City councillor.
City councillor, stuff like that. So I would propose that we make that change and just go what.
Probably helps us in the long run.
Correct. Kind of future-proofs it, basically.
What I'm hearing you say is use the specific noun.
Yeah. And there's a handful of spots in there, but shouldn't be too horribly hard to change.
Word search, there you go.
Thank you.
Lindsay's all over it. The other one that I was looking at was, and this starts a little bit earlier on, there's a, there's many references to mayor or council members and, or mayor and council members. This is, this is something that I'm trying to move towards with audit and finance in general, you know, and this is a little, little bit, slightly bigger picture thing. It's a small thing, but it's also a philosophical thing. You know, when they initially wrote this charter way back in the day, it was a heck of a coup, right? When you have a former president of the United States that opposed it because he liked the strong mayor, former government, that's a heck of a deal that you've pulled off. And ever since they wrote that charter, this town has struggled with the mayor's role in this government, and whether the mayor should be running the government or whether the city manager should be running the government. And so, it is sort of a small thing, but I really, I would like to see in this updated charter, instead of using the mayor or council member as sort of that group, I'd like to see the term elected official. I'd like to see that used instead. I, you know, we've, you've said, we've said a lot, that the mayor is just another.
Just another council member.
Yeah. And there's still powers that the mayor has that are differentiated, and for good reason. And those powers remain, but we really need to get this to a place where the mayor serves a role it really was intended to be, you know. That's, that's where we need to get with this whole thing.
I'm good with that.
I mean, we're just starting to see what Zach can do when he's been freed up a little bit, so that's kind of my thought on that.
Yeah, I think, I think that makes sense. There may be some places, I'm just thinking, there may be a few places where it specifically is something the mayor needs to do.
Absolutely.
That we have to refer, you know, just to the mayor. But in general, I think elected officials is the right approach, yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's good.
Yeah. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes sense.
Yeah.
So let's ask one, for instance, on that question. So, right now, the charter says that the municipal judge, there's a panel of three recommended to the mayor, and the mayor appoints the judge. I feel like the whole council should vote, and should we just strike the mayor and that and say, "A vote of the elected officials"?
That would be changing one of the mayor's specific powers. I think we could agree to do that if you wanted to. I wasn't intending to do that with this specific change, but that is certainly a power we could discuss.
I feel strongly about that.
I don't disagree with you.
Well, just to be, I just want to make sure we're understanding. What I'm, what I'm hearing Councilmember Hobart say is that in situations where it is referring to mayor and/or council collectively.
Yes.
Okay, that that would be replaced with elected officials. But two, but in those specific situations where it's talking about a council member, a, or a, or the mayor, which is actually, which is, as it does, for instance, on the municipal judge section, that with what you're proposing would not be changed.
Correct.
Correct? Okay. Now, so you couldn't make those changes otherwise, just want to make sure we're on the same page.
Right, we are.
Yeah.
Yes. Now, changing specific powers would be.
That'd be different.
A different discussion. One that's worthy to have, for sure.
You ready for me to go on with the memo?
Oh.
Do you have other?
Or do you have something else?
I have one more, and it's kind of a bigger one, though, so.
Let me finish this and then we.
We set that one aside, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So. So, um, you know, the, the, um, the commission recommended removal of the primary, and, um, we are not necessarily in agreement with that approach. Um, uh, council member McCandless did some work on this, and, and, um, and we kind of landed on an idea of, um, that if, that to keep the primary in there, that if a person got more than 50% of the votes in the primary, then they would, you know...
That, that went on the election.
Then that would win the election.
Yeah.
Um, now, Jeremy wasn't 100% sure whether that was possible, and so you were doing a little research on that. I don't know if you're done with that yet or not.
Well, I think there's, it, it's possible. There's just some logistical considerations that we're gonna have to, that we would have to take into account in terms of what that does and, and make sure that that's all consistent with, with, you know, the, the election laws. So, I mean, generally, it's, it's, it's possible. I mean, again, this is, you know, as a charter city, you have a lot more flexibility than the statutory city, so yes, it's generally possible. Uh, if that's, if that's, you know, an angle you want us to, to pursue, and we don't have, you know, the, overall, we have, you know, what, we still have the red line that the charter did, right? There, we, there is not currently, there's not a separate document, uh, other than just my, my notes and, and minutes that Suzanne took from our, you know, from our meetings that, you know, encompasses all of the, the changes that, or the other changes you all have, have talked about, uh, or that, you know, you just brought up. So, what, what I'm generally thinking is, if that's the direction you all want to consider, then eventually, what, what we're gonna work towards is having sort of a, a red line that shows the, the commission red line, but then on top of that, which we've done before, would then be, you know, your, what I'm gonna call council red line.
Blue line.
Right? That is, I mean, in a different color. We figure, it took some, it took some work, but Lindsay eventually figured it out. She just has to pretend to be someone else, and she just has to use a different computer, and she can make it happen. Uh, so essentially, what we, what, what we would then have, and that way you all could see, you know, side by side. So, yes, it's possible if that's the direction, uh, that you all want to go, but obviously, the current red line removed primaries, so if, there's going to be, you know, language that will then be, you know, would, would not be put, some of it's going to be just un, unstricken, and some would actually be, but because this is a change, some would actually be, uh, put back in there in order to do that. So, uh, yes, it's, it's, it's certainly possible. I'm just looking kind of for, for some direction from, from you all before we go down that road.
Well, we said, and when we talked about it, we said, you know, this is gonna need discussion among the, the council as a whole, and, 'cause you all may not agree with what Bridget, I can't, I thought, you know, so I, I don't know. Um, but that was just our, our, um, you know, we just wanted to give you the benefit of our thinking and our discussion and see what y'all think, so.
Let me just provide my rationale for keeping the primary, 'cause you recommended taking it out. Um, my rationale was, some of it personal, I know that I was a much better candidate for having to go through the primary. The process was longer, I had two debates, I had more conversations, um, the process starts earlier, and for that reason, I was a better council member when elected, so that's one reason. The other is, you could imagine a primary where you have 10 candidates, and the winner of the general election gets 8% of the vote, or 12% of the vote. They win the majority, but they aren't really endorsed by the whole community, uh, and I think that would be an awful hard place to govern from, um, especially if it's the mayor. So, that's, that was my rationale for keeping the primary, but with the concession that if you win 51% of the vote, you don't have to go to the general. That saves the city money, it saves the candidate time and energy, um, it was my mechanism for splitting the baby. Now, whether that makes sense to anybody but me, that's the discussion.
And, Tom, you've got a question, Tom, or a comment on that one?
Yeah.
Absolutely. Come up here so people can hear you, and give us your thoughts on the discussion you guys had.
And it was a lengthy discussion. We went back and forth a couple of months, actually.
Two votes.
Two votes on this, and it was, it was not unanimous. However, um, my, my question to you, Bridget, based on your experience, and I've, and I'm not, I haven't run for, uh, public office, so I appreciate that experience.
Yeah, you should.
So few cities have primaries in the state of Missouri.
Yeah.
My question is, are we, do we, have we produced that much of a better, uh, elected official body because we went through a primary, or what's, what's the difference? Why, why do we have, uh, are we set out so much in this process? So, I know it's easy to just say, "Well, we, we've been doing it this way for 50, 60 years. Maybe there's a better way." We did discuss that question of a, of a very low percentage, and again, we go back to the question of, well, why do 800 other Missouri cities not have the question, not have the issue? Uh, so, there was a, one of the things that I was really surprised to find out is that the, the model charter said that, that their experience is that you have higher participation and more voter interest when you don't have a primary, because you're allowing more people to be involved. So, we, we certainly took that into consideration. And then, of course, the cost, not only to the city, but to the candidates.
Of course.
Significant, significant, which can be a barrier to some really good candidates.
Right.
Right? So, I know there are a lot of things to think about.
My concern is back to, this is a town of tradition, and we're making a pretty monstrous change with this charter, and if you make that change, there may be people who vote against a good charter for the fear of that unknown. And maybe that's a cowardly approach to this, but we need to provide enough comfort that people feel confident that this can move forward, and the next time this goes up for review, I think then you would look at it and say, "Did the change we make with, you know, 51%, was that adequate? Did that work? Did it change things?", and then reconsider that question again. That's my thought.
I've got a lot of thought. Come on up, Jackie. Come on up.
Since we just had a primary election, and this is something we discussed as a commission, the turnout, let's say, let's use District One, which I was watching very closely, the turnout for District One primary was less, the vote was less than 1,000 people, I believe. That, there are a lot of people who live, a lot of registered voters, that had to be less, way less than 10%. I don't know what the percentage was. 4%? Are you...
Four and a half, if you would.
I mean, if you're gonna elect a council member who gets 51% of 4%, that's 2%. And, and we had a lengthy discussion about that during our meetings, so I, I'm not... It's your decision. I, I understand that, but we did, we did discuss that. And then, again, as, as, I believe, maybe you mentioned it, or I did earlier, but this was also the recommendation of the, um, election board to do this.
Okay.
Okay, so I have other comments, but I'll wait till you're done.
Okay.
Okay.
But what I hear you saying is, your recommendation is still to do a primary, is what I'm hearing you say.
Still do a primary?
Take the primary out.
Yeah, take, to take the primary out, just one, one vote in reverse, gets the most votes wins.
If we can have that as a separate ballot question.
Okay.
Because we know that that, there will be people who will be against it.
Right.
And I wouldn't want to do one question that included that and everything else.
Right.
Right, no, great, great point.
And I just might add, while, while I would agree with Bridget's comments that between the primary and the general, I was a much, I became a much better candidate, much better well-informed, and so on and so forth, but the other piece of the puzzle is that, um, you know, I, I would find it, you know, really challenging if we had, in Bridget's scenario, 10, 10 people, let's say 10 people ran for the mayor, and, and the mayor got elected with, you know, 30% of the vote, you know? Boy, that's, that's tough, you know? I, I think that would be, it'd be a hard place to govern from. I, I'd say it can be done. I mean, obviously, it can, but, um, I'm just thinking out loud.
What did Carson get one of the last times?
29%.
30, 32% or...
I would also just say that just from my, having experienced the Blue Springs elections when I worked there, um, they don't have a primary, but they never had 10 candidates for mayor, or for any office. I mean, rarely had more than three, as I recall.
Yeah.
So, I don't know that that wouldn't happen, but I don't think it's common to have, especially when we have the petition process. The petition process to become a candidate is burdensome, and so, and we're keep, we've, our recommendation was to keep that.
Yeah.
So, I don't, I don't see...
And most places don't have that either.
Correct.
Yeah.
I don't see there being, again, 10 candidates for one office in a general election.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Come on up.
It's worth, it's worth mentioning, too, that we, we felt that the line reasoning was that taking, removing the primary would force candidates to talk about the issues rather than each other, because when you get down to two, then, then that's the obvious. That's generally the obvious, uh, approach, so that could, I think...
I'd be wishful thinking.
Maybe.
I don't know.
Yeah. I mean, it'd be...
That's interesting, but you don't, they don't know, you don't know as much where you might stand. I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
That's interesting.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, I hadn't thought about that.
That's a, that's a, that's a good thought.
There's a lot of sides to this one. Here it is, and I'm just gonna add a whole nother Pandora's box to it.
You got a note to add to it?
Absolutely, and it's one I feel passionate about, so here we go. I really believe, uh, and it's almost a modification of council member McCandless's idea with regards to 51%, is ranked choice voting. A lot of people don't know what ranked choice voting is, but I feel very, very passionate about it, and because, uh, if, if we have citizens on the municipal level learn how to do ranked choice voting, and that's basically if, you, you know, you pick candidate one, candidate two, candidate three, and if someone doesn't get the 50, 50%, then the second choices, you know, are add up, and then you get to whatever becomes the, the most prominent, highest choices of that, and then you get the 51%. I feel very strongly about that because what it does is, it allows, it, it forces you more to talk about the issues and the policies, and rather than running towards the extremes. Because in a primary, then a general election, in the primary, particularly in, and I realize these are not partisan elections, but in partisan elections, as we're seeing in America, people are running towards the extremes in order to get elected, and then if they're in safe districts, depending on which party, uh, they run to the extreme in order to get, if they win the primary, they know the general election is irrelevant because of the way the, the district's drawn. And so, my opinion is, and I realize it's not legal in the state of Missouri, uh, to do ranked choice voting, we worked a little bit on the, on the, uh, in the legislature when I was there. I feel very stra, I would like this proposal, this is my proposal.
Jeremy was just looking up the law to tell you.
It's, it's not, it's not legal. Let me just look it up.
Agreed.
Right, yeah. I, I can, I can cover that for you. Uh, actually, I was there when they were proposing that if you're in the legislature for three years, you become an attorney, so there you go. Uh, I don't, I don't qualify for that, but I feel very strongly about that as an approach, and I've got a couple of ideas on how we can proceed with this. Uh, one idea I had was put it in the charter, but I think that, I don't want to, I don't want to gun up the charter with that question, even though it's an important question, but I would like this body to consider, uh, having an ordinance on the books that if ranked choice voting in fact became the law of the state of Missouri, that ranked choice voting in fact would be the way that we would carry out, conduct municipal elections going forward. Uh, I think the reason being is that way people can learn what, what ranked choice voting is, they get a chance to see it in process, and I think it's a way that you, you stop people from running to the extremes because you've got to go to that middle and get that, uh, you know, and, and, and so, because in this country, we typically have two choices, rather than, uh, and this is just an aside, a quick story, I was on a plane with a guy from, I believe, Norway or Greenland or s, some country around there, and, and I asked him about his, his country and how elections were run, and he says, "We're actually very polite and kind and respectful to each other", and I said, "Why is that?", and he says, "We've got 16 parties. We have to build a coalition, and the only way that you build a coalition is be respectful and kind in, in working with people." So, that's my thought on it. I want to propose that. I'm not gonna ask you to put it in the charter, uh, that would be my, my wish if I could wave a wand, but I'm not gonna propose that. I think it might gum me up, and I would rather us pass this than gum it up with that, you know, I think that's an important question, so, you know, I, I would propose that we talk about that and, and go forward with it. I think, you know, Jeremy, I'm, you know, we could do that, have an ordinance, then once it's triggered by state law, it in fact becomes, um, the act of the land for us. Is that possible, or am I...
No, because your charter will be in contravention to that.
Hmm. Good point.
Agreed.
All right, then, I might push forward on the charter. 'Cause it's just, I just think it's such an important question for us as a society. So, anyway, uh, we'll give that some thought. I've leviated too long, let's move on. Yes, please.
So, first of all, I don't know much about ranked choice voting. I just know that any time I've ever heard any city's doing it, it's just been a cluster, and it's taken them a long time to figure out a new election. Um, but maybe that wouldn't happen here, I really don't know. When we put this, if we put this on the ballot, it definitely needs to be one question. I think some other people mentioned, it needs to be a question of its own.
Yep.
Because it's done before, this one question can tank everything.
Right.
Because I don't know if the citizens are gonna go for this. I'm in agreement with a lot of the things Bridget said about, the, I, I want to see the system just kind of stay the way it is, and I agree with Bridget on a lot of what she said. Um, I don't really like the idea of, um, the, uh, the primary person who's in the election if they got 50% overall, just because of the sheer amount of turnout. There's a lot more people that vote in the general election. Um, and this is just an idea, and I don't know if it can be done either, um, what if, could we have a runoff election, um, kind of like some states do, you know, like if somebody doesn't get 50% more in the general, could we do a runoff election if we eliminated primaries? Um, but that's just an idea. But that's all I have.
But isn't the primary basically a runoff election?
What I'm saying is that we eliminated the primaries, and then the person, if the person in the general election didn't get 50%, could we do a runoff election?
Like between the top two vote getters or something?
Right. Well, my preference is, and I understand the reason the charter made it the way they did it, I do, there's a lot of cost to it, and I have very good reasons. I, my preference would be just to have it the way it was. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Um, so we'll come to a conclusion. We've had some discussion on it, we'll come to a conclusion on that and make a proposal when we vote on putting this on the ballot. I just have a, a real quick question, so I get a sense of timing on this. To be ready to go on the August ballot, we obviously need probably six weeks before that, so we're looking at the middle of June, is that correct?
May 28.
We'd be looking at the end, end of May.
End of May, so May 28, you've already looked at that, May 28th, so very good. So, that means that we probably have to have this, uh, in front of the council. I would say, you know, first read the end of March or first read the first council meeting in April. Would you agree with that?
I would say we need to be decided on this by the end of March for, period. I think we need to make some decisions and vote on this as soon as we can.
Okay.
I really do.
I just want, no, I agree with that completely, I just want to get the flavor of the... I just wanna, no, I agree with that completely, I just wanna get the flavor of the group to say where do we go and how we move forward. I'm completely good with moving forward, and this is important, needs to be done, and, but it also needs to be done in a, in a judicious, appropriate, you know, thoughtful way.
We need to be smart about it and thoughtful, but we need to make these decisions and get it done, 'cause there's gonna have to be some public time to digest it and information and town halls and.
And a lot of work on Jeremy's part, like a ferocious amount of work.
Right.
I'm thinking it's the fine young lawyer to his left, he's gotta be doing some work.
Go Lindsey.
Yeah.
That's right, go Lindsey.
So, is tonight just like we surface things, everybody goes home and chews on it, think what you can live with, and then we have a second meeting where we like fight to the death? Okay, got it?
Well, I think we would.
I'm okay with that.
And this is my idea, that we actually have to have a proposal for that section in front of us, that we wordsmith and we vote on, and we approve in a council meeting. And so, it's gonna require a couple of readings, so, you know, we probably need to get together, or maybe the two of you to get together with Jeremy and say, "Okay, which questions we have, which proposals do we have," and then make those that we're, and then make an ordinance so that, that we then have.
No, no, no.
No?
No, we don't need to do an ordinance on every single change.
No?
No, 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 we just, we need, we can do the changes we want to.
Charter, ballot length, which is what we're meaning.
Okay.
We just need to come to consensus about give and take and figure out what language everybody can live with. That, to me, makes the most sense.
Yeah.
We don't need an ordinance up, up until you're, we're ready to, for what's gonna actually go on the ballot. So, up, up until then, you welcome, I mean, as long as it's, you know, on a, you know, on the council agenda, you can talk about it, give us direction, but it doesn't, I mean, it doesn't even need to be, you know, an ordinance at that point, it can still just be a, an action item, and then, you know, once, ideally, once you all are, you know, we, we feel like you've gotten what, what you want out of this, then we would bring it, you know, and directed us in terms of how you want it broken up, if you want it broken up, then we would, you know, by the time we bring you back, the ordinances for the ballot, ideally, those would then be in, you know.
Yep.
Essentially their, their final form, and with, with the hope that you, you've done all your, your kind of work and negotiating to get to that point, ideally.
Yep.
Ready to move on?
Yeah, go ahead.
Article one, we, our comments there are relative to the public engagement piece. We found that language to be really long and kind of excessive, and, you know, what we did there was, we essentially said, you know, "Let's see if we can cut that down." And so, on the next page, it's page three of the, of the memo, you'll see the language where we kind of ended up with. And what we really did is we took the first part of the, the language that was, you know, included, and then we kind of let the rest of it go. That really, we felt like that gave the essence of what we were trying to com, um, come up with relative to this rule. We, we agree it's important, we just thought it was really pretty cumbersome language, and I know, and I think, Bridget, you talked to Jackie about that, and what, to find out where all that came from, that came from Model City's language, and, and I think you said that Jackie agreed that that was pretty challenging.
It was long.
I don't wanna put words in your mouth, but anyway. So, that's, that's the discussion there, I don't know if there's any further discussion about that. Article two, you know, we just said that there was some language in there about the, it's in the current lang, current charter, actually, that says the management analyst or internal auditor has to evaluate the efficiency and performance of all city functions. We're not sure that's even practical or feasible or anything, so we just said, you know, we changed it to as directed by the Audit and Finance Committee, and we thought that kind of made sense there. And we made a change in section two point two four about it being, the code should be updated no less than annually, and we, in two point two six, we struck the word "all" in there. That's just because, again, it was referring to all. We didn't have any changes on article three. We talked about on article four about municipal court, we talked about removing the residency requirement for municipal court judge, and, and, you know, my, my take on it, Bridget thinks that the whole council should vote on it, I just think, you know, the mayor could appoint, and then we ratify the appointment, I mean, we, but, I, I'd go either way on that, so. That, that's what we had in article four. I'm gonna keep talking unless somebody interrupts me, so.
Anybody, well, I'm, does anybody have thoughts on?
I would agree with the council voting as opposed to mayor appointing.
Okay.
Just, just simple majority.
Yes, please proceed.
So, I guess, I mean, how would, if the mayor doesn't appoint, I mean, I, I think the council definitely needs to approve it, but how would it work if the council just had to appoint somebody, I mean, somebody has to be nominated at least, correct, or would we just?
If they get nominated from the judicial commission.
But it's a panel, it's three.
It's a panel of three attorneys, right?
Right, and the mayor, okay, I get it, right, okay, okay. You know, I, I like the idea of the council having to do that.
So, it would work the same, except, except it being the mayor, it would just be the council.
Okay.
Has to vote, has to vote to approve.
But you would pick from those three candidates, or would you finally come up with one recommendation?
Well, they would, they would put forth their pick or picks.
They make their recommendation.
And then we'd vote, and if we didn't like them, they'd have to go get more.
But you still have to select one of the three, and Bryce's question is, what is the process?
Exactly.
So, if at least the mayor appoints them, and it has to be ratified, if it's not ratified, you go back to the next two.
Right.
The mayor picks one of those, it would have to be ratified, if not ratified, it has to go to the last guy. So, it, I think your solution makes a lot more sense, otherwise, we have a blood sport.
The alternative is that you get the, the panel, the, the, the three recommendations from the commission, and then it would just, it would be up to the council for some, for a member of the council to look at, you know, those three, and somebody make a motion to appoint one of those three. That, that's the alternative. So if there wasn't the mayor sort of in between, which is what is, I, I think is your proposing, where he gets the list of three, he picks, I'm saying he, because the, the mayor picks, picks one of those three, and then it's up to the council to ratify. If the mayor isn't, if that, if mayor doesn't have that role, then all three of the picks go to the council, and then it's up to a council member to make a motion.
Make a motion.
From that list to pick one of those, and if it passes, then it's done, and if it doesn't, then somebody can make another motion, or, you know, however.
I would just treat it like a hire. He'd bring them in and interview them and, you know, treat it like a hire, and then, then.
I'm cool with it.
Vote and pick somebody.
Yeah.
I mean, that's kind of how I'd treat it.
What is other people's thoughts?
I mean, that's not how it's worked around here.
Well, I understand.
Every, I mean, you and I both know how it's worked around here.
Oh, I understand, and that's, I think that's the concern of the council.
Yeah.
And, and I'm completely good with that.
Yeah, right, me too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, it just, it just comes down to, what's the mechanism? Do you just wanna, you know, have the three, have a council member make the recommendation, and if, if you get four votes for it, boom, they're hired?
I think, I think we ought to do it, treat it like we do hiring a clerk, or hiring a management analyst, or.
Or hiring a city manager.
So how is it treated in the charter?
But how do we put it in the charter?
We just do language like that.
Yeah, so i- in the charter, the, it, the nominee, the judicial commission would submit those three, you know, to the council instead of to the mayor, I mean, that's, that's, that's gonna be the only change there.
Yeah.
It's, it goes to, to the body instead of to one elected, one member.
Yeah.
If that's, so, we just.
And then somebody make a motion, somebody would second it, we take a vote on that.
How often do they do that? I forget.
You know, it's been a long time in Independence, so.
Uh, how, well, the.
Was it term three years?
The term is three years.
Three years term, okay.
Yeah.
That's what I meant.
Right, and obviously, you know, and that, and this is for all municipal judges, you know, currently there are two, in theory, there could be more, you know, more than two, but, you know, currently there are two, so this is how, how they're both selected.
Yeah.
So, yeah, three, three-year terms.
And they just get reappointed by the mayor.
So, just for my purposes, is currently is the consensus that it, it, the three member, the, the three named list goes to the council, is that what you're all leaning towards right now?
And it would be more of a traditional sort of vetting, hiring type process.
I can live with it either way, you know.
You okay with that?
Yeah, I can live with it either way, I'm, I'm good.
That's what I'd like to see, actually, be a little more.
Bryce, are you okay with that?
You know, I just want the council to have an overall approval, that I like the council on the Brown vs. I here.
Okay.
That's fine.
Good.
Okay. So, there was a question on article five relative to.
I'm sorry, before you move on, was there any thoughts on, on the residency requirement?
Oh, yeah, that's a good question, thank you. Thank you.
I kind of like it personally, just 'cause somebody living here knows a little more about, you know, but good chunk of the folks that appear in municipal court live here, so I kind of like it, just 'cause they're maybe a little more in tune with how folks are around here.
But they have to have lived here for four years, and the number of lawyers living in Independence is shrinking, so your pool is getting tight.
And once they get replaced by AI, how many will we have?
Voting better decisions.
Voting head on the screen. What do you guys, do you have a, you have a preference, what do you think?
Bryce, you got? I'll defer.
I don't really have a preference either, why?
Yeah. Maybe we, let's just remove it then.
You could make it the same as the city manager, that you don't have to be a resident to apply for the job, but you need to relocate here, I don't know, what's the rules for you, Zach, within six months, or?
Typically, what I have done is said within six months, there's been some exceptions to that, obviously, but for the vast majority, particularly people relocating to the area, I've said a six-month window.
Since you're the lawyer in the room, Jeremy, what's your thought? I'm sorry.
There's another lawyers in the room.
I mean, I think you'd defer, let's see the elected official, if I were you. Yeah, I mean, I, would you like to give your thoughts?
I'd love to hear your thoughts.
I think the idea is, it sort of depends on how you see the position. If, if you see it more as a, I mean, as a public official, more, more akin to you all, or if you see it more as a hiring decision. So if you, if you see it as a, as a hiring decision, where you're just, you, you wanna pick the, the, the right person for the job, then I think the residency issue matters less. If you see it more as you're, this is a, a public official in our community, and we wanna make sure that, that they have a presence and know what's going on, then I think the residency requirement makes sense. So, that's, you know, to me, it just sort of depends on how you all see that particular position, in terms of whether or not that requirement is appropriate or not.
Did the commission have any discussion on that, you know?
Probably not.
And I doubt that we would.
Did you have a resident, did you have a residency requirement in Blue Springs? Probably not.
I don't think so.
Yeah.
I'm gonna come on pretty strong here at this point, 'cause I, through this discussion, I've changed my mind. I'm not in favor of a residency requirement for this job. Number one, municipal courts have been gutted by Senate Bill Five. The opportunity for us to really hold people accountable is extremely limited, and their role as municipal judge has become so.
Diminished.
Neutered is a great word, thank you. And so with that, I would get rid of the residency requirement, hire the best person you can. You know the, the number of, of people that do not show up now, that we really can't, you know, what can we do to them? And, and people are knowing that now, and they don't show up, and we're seeing it in driving behaviors, we're seeing it in a whole host of things.
Yeah.
But until the legislature revisits that, and I think that's the most significant change that's happened since our, our, our charter's been written, and I'd say just get rid of the residency requirement, and.
That's a good point.
That, that's.
That's fine.
Is that good?
Yep, I agree.
That's fine.
That's, that's a good point.
How about you, councilmember?
Senator Brown.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, anyb, uh, Councilmember Fears?
Article five, we talked about the, the budget part of the code slash Board of Ethics discussion, because, you know, it talks about there be a budget, and that that budget piece would report to Audit and Finance Committee, that, that seemed to be a reasonable place to have that go to.
Yeah.
So, that was our thought there. Article six is back to the question of primary, and, and then Jeremy was working on some language to clarify the process of picking up packets, and turning in packets, and, and some of that. Jeremy, did you have anything more on that?
Yeah, well, I think one of the questions was, and Lindsey looked into this, you know, you know, what decides when, when packets are available, and, and it seems that that's essentially whenever we decide they're all ready to go. I mean, there are, there are certain requirements that have to be met, as long as, you know, we meet those, in terms of deadlines, when, when they actually become available is, is just, you know, up, up to staff essentially, or up to, you know, once you all, you know, direct us to one way or the other. So, I mean, there, there, that language isn't in there right now, if you all wanted to clear, you know, to, to add some certainty to that process, you certainly could, but it's not really something that's addressed currently.
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Hey, so, this is something a little bit different than that, but I'll be honest, I don't like the idea of people camping out to.
Amen.
Basically, sign up for the election, like a week before signups start. Correct me if I'm wrong, I've never ran for a state office, but when you sign up, you can sign up pretty much any time, is it just a random drawing, is that the way it works for the state?
If I can answer that, 'cause I've gone through the process, that's exactly right.
Yeah, I was asking you here.
And, and I agree with you completely. I, I loved it when they went to that system, you just walk in, it's a random draw, you pick your number, you could be first, you could be last, whatever, it's just the luck of the draw, and it eliminates that camping out, it eliminates that long line, and I think it's also a safety issue, being out there overnight, particularly in the winter months, can be cold. I'm, I'm completely in favor of going to randomize system, and.
Yeah, I, I think the language that is included, which, which allows you, the, on the first day, anybody, you file on the first day, and you random on that day after the first day, then it's a first come, first served.
Right.
I, I thought that was great language, I liked that a lot.
I agree, I think it was a good addition, so thank you.
Good deal.
Yeah.
Yep, and are you good with that, Councilmember Stewart? Because it's, in the charter, the way it's proposed, it's randomized on day one, and then after that, then it's in the order that you come into.
Yeah, I think I'd be, yeah, I'm fine with that, I just wanna make sure that we put our random system so people aren't camping out.
Yeah, I agree, and, and they've made provisions for that, so that's a great question, thank you.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
Let's see, and Jeremy, you were gonna give, look at some language to clarify that whole issue around tax delinquency, and so it includes really any fees owed to the city, or, you know?
Yeah, we can, I mean, we've, we've got some language ready to go, if that's the direction that you all wanna head.
So the comment was, and the observation was, is that the language, the way it's written, means that, you know, a, a candidate could, you know, have paid their, their, their personal property tax, their real estate tax on their house, but have, you know, twenty pieces of rental property and not paid any of that, and, and I just think that. property, and not paid any of that, and, and I just think that all, it ought be all in.
Your business with the city should be in good standing.
Right, right.
Rental-ready.
Right, all, all the above, whatever it is.
All that stuff.
So...
Yeah.
However, I'll put a pin in that, having lived through the last set of Jackson County tax issues, there are a lot of people who are in this suspended animation, so...
Well, if you have a...
If you're in adjudication, or something else, that shouldn't apply to you.
No, I, that's different, I mean, having a legal, being in a valid protest, or in a legal, you know, appeal, or something, is different than just not having a, you know, valid license.
Well, and then the question also, it becomes this, is typically a judge is the one who removes somebody from the ballot, so someone would have to make an action to say, this candidate is not eligible to be on the ballot, and so, do we in our charter, you know, make those appeals go to our municipal judge, and they decide, or do we make it go to a higher or different court outside of our system? I, you know, because I've never seen, you know, where one individual is allowed to, you know, do that, however, we are having unique circumstances on a national level right now, but...
Well, I, I think if it just states that they're in good standing, you know, with the city somehow, except for, like, what Bridgette was talking about.
Right.
You don't, they never get on the ballot, you know, unless they're in good standing at the time of filing.
Yeah, you're not qualified.
And so, are we gonna say they can't be in arrears to the city, because that covers utilities, taxes, fines?
Yeah, any of the above, yeah.
Yeah, is that, I mean, you bring your language...
I mean, no, that, I mean, I, well, I mean, yeah, we'll bring it based on what you all want, I mean, that, we can do that, to be clear, you know, this, um...
Warrants, all that, yeah.
Okay, well, that's di, I mean, that's a different thing.
Well, it's included.
Okay.
So, are you saying in good legal standing, because that's really different than have you paid your fines?
Well, it, it's not, I mean, it is, but it's not, I mean, you need to be a, you need to be Tom Waters, if you wanna be on this council, man. That's the thing.
It, to be clear, it wouldn't cover, you know, if someone could have a, a, you know, rental property that's owned by an LLC, or something like that, you know, I mean, it, it...
It's not gonna be...
Right, it's only going to apply to anything that is, you know, personal property, personal to, that, you know, tied to that person's actual name, it wouldn't go beyond that.
Right.
I think we just gotta do the best we can in that regard. Both of all the changes that we really had, everything else was, we, we just felt like was really well done, and...
And I just wanted to add one thing to what Jeremy just said, I, I've seen it in elections, that if you make it their businesses and things like that, then people have been accused of businesses they didn't own, that were from the same name, and they were accused of it, and then they do a mailing on them, and they're saying, well, that this was it, that's not fair either. So, I like the idea of making it very, just them personally, what they're responsible for, even though I know that people, I, I have other heartburn on LLCs and things like that, with regards to rental-ready and stuff, but, you know, you do the best you can.
Well, this is for, this is for upfront stuff, too, to, you know, be qualified to run, and, you know...
To be qualified for the city clerk to put you on the ballot, is what we recommend you to the election board to do that.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect, anything else?
Jackie, what's your thoughts?
So, on that last item, I know, we, we discussed that also at length, you know, what delinquencies...
Jackie, is your mic on?
Yeah, I'm not, I must not be speaking into it. And I, I can't remember, isn't that statutory? Seems like it was.
Some of it is, not to the extent that we're defining it here.
That's what I'm, I, I think what we left in there is the statute.
The statute.
It's possible, it's been a while, you're right, I do remember the, the conversation.
I would just ask, can we add more to that?
Yeah, we'll, we'll definitely double-check that when we, when we look at it, because I, I don't remember exactly, I remember the discussion, but I don't remember the ultimate justification for what was done, so we'll double-check that.
And the reason we changed it was because we took out the forms, took them out of the charter, and the forms had some of those qualifications in them, but that wasn't actually in the language of the charter, so we took it from the form and put it in the charter.
Yes.
I would just ask that question.
Yeah, I agree, that's a good, that's a good point, so, yeah, we'll, we'll double-check that as we're working through these changes.
Okay. Random notes, but, okay, these are not in any particular order, first, on the question of how many ballot questions to have, and I know, Councilmember Fears' recommendation was three, and I think...
This is what we talked about.
I think, you know, that would be manageable for voters, easier for voters to, you know, they don't get tired of reading through everything, but I guess another question I have for you, Jeremy, is how detailed do those have to be? Because there's a lot of, a lot of kind of different categorized changes that we're wanting to make to the charter, do we have to list every single one type of change out? That could make a ballot question that's a page long. I don't know, and again, I don't know the answer to that, but I do know that when, again, I'm going back to Blue Springs, when we did our charter review, that we, we had eight, and we were able to kind of combine them in categories into eight, it seems like we could possibly, I think, I think we might need more than three, don't know that we would need eight, but...
True, I mean, certainly could, I mean, I, yeah, that was one of the options that I threw out there, was sort of having, you know, again, necessarily, I, I think the, as I, the, the, what Councilmember Fears was proposing with the three, was sort of one really big one, right? And then, one essentially that addresses IPL, and one that addresses the primaries, right? I mean, that was the idea.
That was the idea.
So, so, I mean, I, in terms of how this is going to actually, you know, we're, I, I think at this point, we ha, I haven't started talking with the election board or anything like that, because I, I didn't feel like that was, we were quite to that point yet, so, yeah, I mean, there, there may, there's certainly gonna be some logistical issues, but I, we could certainly do more than three, or, or three in, in, or three different ones, if, if, you know, you decided that they didn't need to be broken up that way, or something like that, I mean, I, I think there, there's pros and cons to everything, the, the, you know, most, to me, the most important thing to consider is that we don't want, you know, someone to be like, yep, I'm okay with 99% of this, but here's this one thing that I don't like, and because, you know, 1%, of this, I have a problem with, and because of that, I'm gonna vote no on the whole thing. So, that's where I, ideally, we would take that into account, and, and so, you know, that way, we didn't have those situations where, you know, everybody's like, oh, yeah, we're all fine with that, 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 it was that one little thing, but you threw it, you know, you lumped those together, and that's why we voted no on that. So, my, my goal for, in terms of breaking it up, is to take those, and, and to be fair, you are gonna have a better idea what those things are, but to take those considerations into account, to, to essentially give us the, the best, you know, possible probability of having, you know, as much of this approved by the voters as, as we can, and so, to the extent there are especially controversial things, maybe those are either called out, you know, entirely on their own, or in a smaller, you know, maybe not, if it's not by itself, 'cause it doesn't make sense, maybe it's with a smaller chunk, or something like that, because that's really what I have in mind, is just making, you know, you want to be digestible by the voters, recognizing that this is all gonna be a lot, sort of, no matter how you slice it up, but in the end, if we can make it, you know, digestible in chunks, where that they can be, yep, I'm okay with this, 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 and this, but there's just one little thing, and I'm voting no, and then we haven't, you know, lost everything else, just because of that one, that one issue.
And that's really the reason we came up with the three, is we thought the, the primary question was a, a big enough question, and the selling of utility was a big enough question, and everything else, we thought, was pretty manageable, I mean, as far as, not as manageable in terms of language, we hadn't gotten that far yet, but manageable in terms of concept, that, that it's updatin' language in the charter for a variety of different reasons, you know?
Mostly vanilla.
So, I've never seen one of these, so do you say, you know, subsection A, to make consistent with Missouri state statute, B, to remove departments to city ordinance, C, to, you know, define XYZ, I mean, how, you don't have to put the underlying language in what's on the ballot, that's what I'm getting at, or else it's a 45-page ballot.
Yeah, I, I...
Go ahead.
I don't really know the answer to that either, I don't know, it, does, does the actual ballot say, you know, that a copy of this is available with the city clerk?
Right, so, what I envision, having not personally done this before, and again, ideally, and going forward, obviously, the city will be in a much better position, where changes are made in small, manageable chunks, right? You're, you're updating a section here and there, and it's, I mean, this is sort of a one-time thing, so I haven't, you know, we haven't gotten into that yet, but what, what I anticipate, and what I have seen before, as it actually relates to annexations, is where there's essentially an exhibit there, when they're voting, that would, you know, reference, so you wouldn't have the entire document necessarily on the actual ballot, but the ballot is then going to have sort of, you know, questions like what you're presenting, but it's gonna be, it, and then you would have this exhibit that you would go to, to say, okay, this is talking about, you know, Articles One through Five, here is the exhibit that goes with Article One through Five, that's, I mean, so it's not literally incorporated into the question on the ballot, but it has to be there, I mean, in the end, the voters have to approve the actual language, and certainly, we can't expect anyone to, you know, I mean, memorize it, or anything like, you know, or know what they're approving, if we don't have it right in front of them. So, that's, that's generally how, how I envisioned it, but again, we've been holding off until we kind of get to, to this spot.
I guess I'm asking, can you put on there, these changes would remove the departments to the ordinance before you've done that, because you're voting on something that doesn't yet exist?
I'm sorry, will you repeat that?
So, what I'm asking is, so I'm voting on, one, it says consistent with Missouri code, two is, we cleaned up language, three says, we have moved departments into city ordinances, but if we haven't done that yet...
Some of them, some of them are already in the code of ordinances, not all of them, but, yeah, that's, that's a good question.
So, the code, I mean, the code has to be treated separately from, from all of this, so, I mean, that's where, you know, there's sort of a, you know, chicken or egg argument, in terms of how, to the extent there was just language in the charter, that verbatim, and, and this exists in some places, that verbatim should go into the code, ideally, I think, if you go off what the Charter Commission's recommending, it would come out of the charter, right, and go into the code, but to the extent that, that language is identical, nothing prevents you all from putting that in the code now, because it's consistent, right? The code can duplicate, and, and in fact, does in places, what the charter has, so, you know, to the extent the language is, is identical, or at least not inconsistent with the code, or with the charter, we could put that in there now. The problem is, it's all mixed together, where we've got both, you know, language that would come out, copy and paste, and changes to it, and so that's where, if we try to bifurcate that, where we say, okay, we're only gonna, in, in this ordinance, we're gonna just do the changes that are copy and paste from the charter, and in this ordinance, we're gonna do everything else, it's going to be very messy, because obviously, not only do we have, I mean, certainly within sections, things relate back and forth, but, but even within other articles themselves, so that was where we, you know, came up with the idea to, you know, have, have the, the ordinances essentially ready to go, whether you already approved them before, and we have a delay in order to, to make modifications, the idea on the modifications was, let's say you break it up into five chunks, right? So, you could have, we could either do an ordinance for each chunk, or if there was, you know, you wanted to do one ordinance for, for the whole thing, you could do that, too, that would, but then if four out of five got approved, and one didn't, we'd have to go back and fix that ordinance, and so, those are gonna be the, the logistical questions that we're gonna need to, need to address, and, and I think, to me, it, we, we just sort of have to, you know, take this step by step, so, you know, right now, where we need to obviously know what that document looks like, but then, pretty, you know, pretty soon thereafter, especially with the, the timeline we've got, we're gonna need some, some direction from, from you all, in terms of how you wanna break that down, so, we don't have to ans, so, certainly don't have to answer that question, that question tonight, but, you know, we will need to answer it, you know, in, in the fairly near future, because that then dictates what these ordinances look like, you know, obviously, it, you know, maybe if you, depending on how you break them up, maybe most of it does go in August, maybe some, some question gets held back, that you're not, you know, ready to, to, to deal with right now, and that's, that's your prerogative, but that does make a difference in how we organize this, and, and get it ready for, you know, again, eventually into ordinance form, that you all would approve to put on the ballot. In the meantime, we'll also be talking with the, you know, the election board, in terms of how this is, you know, actually gonna be on the ballot, and what it's gonna look like, because I, I, so that's, that's what I have in, in my mind, in terms of how it would look, and actually be fairly functional, but I, that is not, you know, a conversation I've had with them yet.
So, what are next steps?
So, at, at this point, you know, what we were looking for tonight, obviously, you, Councilmembers, you know, Fears and McCandless had, had, you know, gone through it with Suzanne and I in detail, we had, there's a few little other edits in that, I mean, literal things that we just missed throughout the other process, that, that we've been taking notes of, and these were kind of, you know, the, the bigger things that we've heard comments on tonight, you know, we haven't, there's still, you know, a couple of big, of big ideas, but my, my thought at this point would be, that we would take what, what you all have done up to this point, and then what you all have discussed tonight, and do that what I'm calling council redline, that's gonna be layered on top of the, on top of the commission redline, and that way, you can see what that's going to, to look like, and then bring, you know, bring that back to you all, again, it, you know, not in ordinance form yet, if you wanna do it, we can do another work session, if that's what you like, we could actually put it on a study session agenda, if you'd rather do that, but bring that back to, to kind of work through some more, again, in, in the end, you don't actually have to vote on anything until you get the ordinance, now, you could, if you wanna vote on something prelimin, you know, as a preliminary matter, just if there's, you know, if that's how you wanna handle it, we could put it on an actual meeting agenda, as an action item, not as an ordinance, but just to make sure we're, you know, we all know what version we're dealing with, if you wanted to do that, if you feel like it can be handled in, you know, a work session or study session, to get to that point, that's, that's up to you all, so that's, to me, that's the next step, is it comes back to you all as a, as a council redline, for you to, you know, further discuss, and then, once you have, know exactly, once we know what that document looks like, doesn't have to happen, you know, it makes, that's the next step, but it can happen along with that, obviously, we need to know how it's going to be, you know, broken up, to, to try to start putting together the ordinance or ordinances that we would need to actually put in front of you.
Will it come with the companion piece of what needs to be moved? Because I think for anybody to really look at this in its totality, you really have to say, this is the residual in the charter, this is going to be the pieces that are moved to the ordinance, because now I have to project that when I read it.
Okay, I mean, it can, I think the, it can come, and obviously, that's, you know, so at that point, we're taking everything that, that essentially should, is, is being suggested come out of the charter, and put it in the code, obviously, that's gonna be a lot of different chunks, I, if I think, I, so, yeah, I mean, the, the short answer is, yes, that can, that can come to you all, you know, we started, Lindsay and I have been kind of working through that, as we, initially, I didn't, maybe, I thought it was gonna, it's gonna be a little more difficult than I thought it was going to be, so the answer is, yes, it can, it can come to you with that, we're just gonna need a little bit of time to make that happen.
Even if you give us an example, that would be a start.
Or you might... Or you might, you might be able to, in your council redline version, color-code the pieces that are gonna go in the code, the, you know, I don't know if you can or not, that's, I'm just saying...
Lindsay's having a rainbow heart attack over there.
Jeremy, if I might say, when I drafted my, I don't remember what I called it, but my points notes that I made when I made my presentation to the council, I did kind of separate those out, at least I started, had all the departments listed that we were recommending.
Sure. I think, I mean, what is in the current redline has, I think, maybe not in every spot, but generally has comments that this should go in the code. So, that either, I mean, is already done to some extent, it could certainly be done more, but I guess what I'm, but to look at it here, to your point, is different than looking at it, what it's actually going to look like in the code, and in certain places, it actually wouldn't, it's already, it's actually already there, right? There are some places where it's being recommended removed from the charter, but it's already in the code, so clearly, we're not gonna put it in there a second time. So, I, what I, I guess I'm, what I'm asking from you all is, how much do you want? Do you, you know, we've sort of got, we can have on the redline notes that say this should go to the code, we could have that, those sections sort of have a separate document that lists, that just sort of lists those out, right, that says, okay, here's, you know, we're bringing out, you know, this, this, and this, and so here's this whole, you know, article by article, here's all the things that should come out of the charter and go into the code. That's the next option. And then the third option is to have those pieces already put into, sort of integrated where they would go into the code. And that, that is, you know, obviously, the most labor-intensive option, which we'll have to do eventually. My, what I was trying to do was not do that until we, until we got to the point, you know, until we were done, right? Because otherwise, we're having to change all these different documents.
Yeah, I don't think we need to do that.
I'm just saying, like, when we do our work session, it would be helpful to have one of these and say, this is what this would look like when put in the ordinance. We would take it from here, you would see it inserted here, example for Article 4, whatever that is.
Okay.
I just think the, having people get a real sense of what that is gonna look like, you don't have to do the whole kit and kaboodle, it's a monster, but I think the practicality of it will help people understand what you're gonna do.
We can definitely do that.
And Mayor, if you don't mind, I had just had a couple more things that I, that came to me as you were having your discussion. Well, first of all, I am also concerned about having one really large question on the ballot, because there are so many, like Mr. Culver said, there are so many individual items that a person could dislike. Like, for instance, we put in here that if certain, you know, steps are taken, that our municipal court could go to circuit court. That might, people might pick up on that and say, well, we don't want to get rid of our, you know, just that one thing. So, I think I would suggest you make, have more than three. And that's just my personal opinion, I'm not speaking for the commission, because we didn't discuss that. So, and then specifically, one of the things you've got in your memo, Article 2, Section 2.24, I didn't really understand what change you were wanting to make, but I wanted to kind of clarify that that had to do with codification, which is different than reviewing the entire code. Codification is putting everything into one document, and most cities do it yearly, right? I mean, I don't know much about it.
I mean, at least, yeah, I think that would be typical.
It wasn't whether the code needs to be updated, we were probably saying that on the website, it needs to be able to go to.
Yes.
That at least, no more than annually, you've got...
That's everything the council has added to the code of ordinances in the past year, but sometimes it's expensive to do, so I know it's possible that that might, has happened not every year, so that's why we specifically put that in there.
So, so the...
It's not really a review of the code, it's just putting everything in a document.
We were just not sure about, but, the sentence, the way the sentence reads, the way you all had it is, it's published as required by state law and shall be posted on the city's website, but no less than annually. Well, our thought was, is it should be updated no less than annually. The but, no less than annually, didn't really make sense to us.
Okay.
That's all we were...
I understand that, but your note, your, it said the code should be updated, I didn't, I didn't really understand what you were...
So, in, if you look on the redline, it's just, it's a change between, the no less than annually is already what you all were saying, that's not a change. The only, the only change is, rather than, as we read it back, the sentence itself is a little awkward.
Yeah, okay.
So, rather than saying but no less than annually, it would say and updated no less than annually. It was just, that's what they thought.
I misunderstood, I thought it was like the entire code.
The no less than annually is what you all recommended, it's just, they liked the way it sounded better.
That makes sense. And then, just another thing that occurred to me, because you had a discussion on making his/her, his/her, whatever, he/her, he/she, whatever, gender-neutral. Blue Springs did that when they amended their charter, and it was, and you spoke of using the actual title or position, something like that. There are a lot of places in the charter where it's not a title or not a position, and I was pleased that our charter had both, because the Blue Springs charter didn't, some just said he. So, they went back and changed all those to really gender-neutral, to they, them, that sort of change. And I just wanted to put that out there, that it wouldn't just be a title or a position in some places.
That's a good point. So, if, is the intent to make the language gender-neutral? Because I think if that's, you know, she's right, and there are gonna be situations where we can't, there's not a title or position that can be substituted in there. So, if the intent is to make it gender-neutral, then we would, you know, use they, them, that sort of, those pronouns.
Wherever it makes sense.
Okay.
I mean, when it gets too confusing, then practice would leave the statement in the end.
Yeah, I mean, I thought it was, I was happy that it was he slash she, her slash him.
Fine.
So, that's why we didn't make those changes.
But, right now, it says that the city attorney is a he.
Does it say that?
Yes.
We missed that.
Fix that. Other than that, I don't care.
Well, I need a little clarification still.
I think we were gonna take that part out, though, right?
So, so before, so two, yes, so let me ask this. To the extent it makes sense, we would substitute the title or position, which is what Councilmember Hobart was getting at. In places where that doesn't work, do you, is the preference that it say, you know, he slash she, or is the preference that it says they/them? Because that's what I, those are two, so that, if we can make it the title, then that's no problem, but I'm...
Use neutral, man. That's, I would say use they, unless it just doesn't make any sense.
I was concerned when Blue Springs did that, that that might not pass, and it did, passed easily. So, I think it's become more common to do that.
Okay. Do you have anything else?
We're all about progressiveness in this town, Jackie.
That was helpful.
I think that's all I had. I mean, we, again, I'm only speaking for myself and the two members that were near me, but we agreed with about everything else that you wanted to change, sounded good to us.
So, that was gonna be my question, do we do anything that you felt like irreparably harmed your work?
Yeah, you extended our term one more.
What a great lead.
I guess the only thing I want to say after going through this whole process, I've had a lot of interaction with people, and they just keep saying, you're taking too much out of the charter, you're taking too much out. The education piece is gonna be important, but I don't think they've really read the charter, because there were a lot of what I called, and I did it during our meetings, HR manual-type things, job descriptions, position descriptions, things that really didn't belong there. You know, we took out the dairy farmers and the milk machines.
And the clairvoyants and the...
Yeah, well, we wanted to leave that in, but we didn't see that coming, so we took it up. You didn't have a deja vu about that? No, not yet, anyway. But, there just, a lot of people just don't understand what's in that charter and what the document is supposed to be about. So, there needs to be an education piece on what this charter represents, and the changes that were made and why they were made, trying to modernize and update it. You know, we went from, what, 60-some pages to 30?
Thirty.
Thirty. So, it's about half the size, but a lot of that stuff, you know, I even argued, maybe some of that stuff shouldn't even go in the code of ordinances, it should be in the HR manual, based on what was in that document. But I don't think a lot of people have really read that, really understand the document. So, I think an education piece on the actual charter itself, what it means to the city, and then, you know, work down through that. But, it was a great experience to go through, I'm really glad I got a chance to do that. We did several things, we really cussed and discussed a lot about, but in the end, I think it made just a better product.
Historic work.
Yep, absolutely. So, from a process standpoint, I've got a number of questions, but I can hold those later. Just looking, if people can get their calendars, because I want, you know, we need to start from, okay, May 28th, we need to be, have this first read and second read and finalized. So, that's, you know, worst case scenario, that's the first and second meeting of May, unless we have a special meeting just on the charter, which is possible, but I just want you...
If we're doing this in May, it's a failure.
Yeah, right, and so I'm asking you...
Get May out of your mouth.
Right. Well, what I'm saying is, how quickly do you want to, how quickly do we want Jeremy to bring back their changes, so that we can formalize them, so that we're happy and we get it done in a timeframe that you're happy with? That's...
Well, it's not just me, this is a practical matter.
Right, absolutely.
It's, I...
But we've gotta, we've gotta put, we've gotta put timeframes, you know, this is February the 8th, so if we want to have a document in front of us as a body...
What do you guys think?
I think you have another special study session, at least one, maybe two, that you just go through and give examples. These are the things that are HR-related, these are the places that we are in controversy with state law, and just boring, tedious, read it to them. I mean, I don't want anybody to have any questions that we did not spend enough public time discussing this. And so, I think you don't do anything else on Charter Night, you have two of the fourth Mondays, and you dig through the charter a bit at a time, and everybody gets to come.
February and March?
I think, yeah, like the 26th and the 25th, just...
And the question is then, that's the end of March, so, you know, can you have a document ready to go for...
April.
Well, no, excuse me, we're really talking about...
February 26th.
The 26th of February, you know, because we need to have, if I'm hearing you correctly, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I want to be absolutely clear on this, how we proceed, the 26th of February, you're gonna have us a document that we can go over and say, this, these are the, what I hear from you as proposed changes.
But you could do them like Sections 1 through 4, so you guys don't have to bite everything off at once.
But, I think...
Oh, you mean article, yeah, the articles.
Yeah, we can make that. I mean, if you all want to break it up, we can, but I mean, if you all want to break it for your own purposes, but we could have that ready to go. Let me ask, let me clarify this, is this a, because it makes a difference in terms of the agenda and all of that, would February 26th, is that a, an extra study session, or is that a work session?
Well, we only have two open study sessions in order to get this done. I think the 26th is a study session, if we need another work session to make sure we're all on the same page, it's gotta happen for the 26th.
So, are you, let me ask this then, are you okay on the study session? Obviously, the agenda would be, so, the agenda for the February 26th study session will be published on February 16th.
Yeah.
Okay? So, we, clearly, the agenda is not an issue, but are you all okay with not, I don't know that we can have this all ready to go with the, you know, the packet that would go on, that'd be done on February 16th. So, are you okay getting that, say, by...
Right, closer.
I mean, I guess that's not...
Here's, if I can, if I can probably help you a lot, Jeremy, our rules state we have to have the things in place for our council meetings. I'm not quite sure we're that stringent with regards to study sessions.
The agenda is gonna be, so, I mean, typically, we endeavor, I agree, the study sessions are a little bit more flexible, we would obviously have it on the agenda. I'm just asking, for our purposes, you know, I want to make sure that you all have it, you know, in advance, but I, but to have it ready to go entirely on the 16th, I think is gonna be a stretch. So, if you got at some point, let's say, you know, the week of the 19th, would you be okay with that in preparation for the study session on the 26th? It would be posted, the agenda would clearly state what was happening, and we'd go ahead and put, you know, all of, everything on the agenda for the 26th, that way, you all had the flexibility. If you get in there, you're just flying through it, you can keep going, and if you're, you know, not, you know, that's fine, but we put the whole thing on there, on the agenda, to give you all the flexibility, and get you with that redline and these examples and everything that week before, does that work?
Okay with that.
Yeah, I think that's fine. The other thing, though, I think we really have to give some more thought to, is if there are ways that we need to, you know, if, if the way that we suggested that we break it out, you know, break it into three pieces, is what we said, you know, if that's not what others think, then I'd certainly like to hear what others think, because, and how, if they're, because that's gonna be an important piece of the discussion, and that really dictates what your next steps are.
Sure.
So, I really think we need to spend a little time on that.
So, we can have, I mean, again, it's gonna, as far as a options or a recommendation, we can have that ready to go, where we've looked, where Lindsay and I have gone through and kind of said, okay, this works together, you could do this, this, and have some, have some different options for you, and I, and we can also, you know, between now and then, you know, talk with the election board and see if they have any thoughts about how, you know, because again, we have not, you know, had any conversation, I personally have not had any conversations with them about this, so I have no idea, you know, what, you know, if they have a position or not, but we could have those discussions between now and then, and sort of have those recommendations ready to go on the 26th.
I think that'd be real helpful.
You know, we wouldn't have it already broken down, because again, that, but we could have it and say, okay, these, these sections, we've looked at this, this makes sense to piece together, this makes sense to piece together, and that would hopefully make the conversation more productive.
That would be very helpful, I think, yeah.
So, we gotta have two readings to vote on the ordinance to put this on the ballot. And so, this is the, this, to me, this is the biggest question, and I don't think we want to wait till last weekend night.
Right, I say, if we can get the first reading the 28th...
Should we do it the 22nd?
And the second reading the 22nd.
The 15th.
22nd of what?
Well, wouldn't you do the 15th and the 13th of May? That way, it's done well in advance of the 27th.
I mean, if you're wanting to wait till May, but you're talking, that's not very many, that's not a lot of time to get out in the public and let people know what the...
15th of April and 13th and 6th of May.
Well, but all you're doing is voting to put it on the ballot, right? You've got then three months of PR.
Right.
That's it, three months to teach the whole city, I mean, the whole city's voting.
Right.
If you're good with that.
Are you, are you suggesting we put it on the November ballot?
I'm suggesting, I'm suggesting we do...
I think that's crazy talk.
I'm suggesting we pass the ordinance sooner, so we have extra time.
Okay.
But if you don't think we need that, I'll rely on your expertise for that. If you think May's fine...
You think we could have a first reading on the 18th of March, and second reading on the...
First?
1st of April?
These are Jeremy questions.
Well, no, I mean...
Well, go ahead.
For timing, Bridget, if you think that's enough time to get out... For timing, Bridget, if you think that's enough time to get out in the public and educate folks, I mean, I'll, I'll defer to you on that, seriously.
Um-
If you think three, four months is, you know-
Well, I mean, we're, the two weeks for our deliberations are the small change. The question is, are we putting it on the August ballot, or are we putting it on the November ballot?
No, August.
Okay.
August, for sure. Yeah, not November.
Do you have enough time? Because we can put all these things down here, if you can't get the work done.
No, we, we can, we can get the work done, that's, I'm not worried about that, no, that, don't let that, don't let that play into your, your calculations, I just, we just need to know what your plan is. So here's what I'm hearing right now. We would have, you know, the, you're gonna get this red line in the, the week of February 19th, so that, to have it on, and it will already be placed at that point on the study session on the 26th, for you all to discuss that. What, to me, then, there was a question about, could it be on, as a first reading on March 18th? So the, the March 18th agenda, including the whole packet and everything, would, you know, need to be, would be published on March 8th, right? So-
That'd be tough.
My, my concern is that, you know, even if you all, I, I guess it depends on how, if, if you just do the 26th, then, uh, we could, you know, make that happen, but if you're gonna need another meeting after the 26th, then I don't know that we'd have enough time to get that in there and make the changes before we had to have it done on the 8th. That's my concern.
So if we did a study session on the 26th and a study session on the 11th, um, then you would publish on the 15th for a vote on the 25th and a vote, well, you can't do the 25th, that's study session, your next vote would be the first-
That pushes it in, I mean, it'd be on the first and-
I think the first and the 15th makes sense.
In April?
Yeah. First and the 15th, and then you've got, yeah.
Yeah, I think that- It'd actually be the third, because we don't have a meeting on the first, because of the election.
Oh, because of the election.
That's true. But, right, oh, sorry.
So it'd be the fourth and the 15th.
Fourth?
Right.
Throw it the third.
It would be the Wednesday.
That's the election.
We're working around, we're working around the court, as, um, night court that night.
Thursday court.
So we need to be like triple, double, extra communicative, that, that is gonna be a funny date, so people don't feel like we snookered folks.
Right.
So like, at every meeting from now on, we have to say, remember, in April, we are meeting on Thursday the 4th.
Mm-hmm, no, good point. Yeah, I won't be, I won't be here on the 26th, I'm actually out of town working that day, but, um, I trust this body, so-
Will you be able to call in?
Uh, I'd have to, I'll be driving, so, but I could, I could call in and listen on the phone.
Okay.
But I would be driving.
Okay.
From the ditch.
On mute.
Maybe. It's in Texas, so it's flat, so.
Oh, from Buc-E's?
I will be passing a Buc-E's, absolutely, I will.
I think those are reasonable timeframes, if we can get that.
Okay.
That way, everybody's got a, at least a broad sense of it, of what we're, what we're aiming for.
Fourth and the, fourth and the 15th.
Okay.
February 26th.
Councilman Stewart, are you okay with the dates that we've recommended?
I think you fell asleep.
Hello, I'm giving everything, otherwise I would assess on you.
Okay, thank you. How, are you still doing the red trace writing?
He's been served for the no.
All right. Um, anybody else, other, other questions, comments, concerns, are we good on the timeframe? Because I just think it's so important for us to be very clear on that, that way you know your marching orders, and then we can have the product and we can go forward.
And we can publish the schedule of discussion, we're gonna be having a study session here, a study session here, we're gonna, I mean, I think the more that we can drive people to insanity with that, a single piece of paper, with the, with the agenda for every meeting, so people know when we're gonna be discussing things.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, so, and I, just to be clear, so the, on, on February 26th, this will be the only, I mean, the charter will be the only agenda item.
Right.
I mean, currently, I don't know what's on the, I mean, March 11th is a regu-, usually a regular study session, uh, so I, I don't know what's already on there, if, are you, to the extent, I mean, I assume things are planned, but I don't, you know-
For February?
No, for March 11th.
I, I don't think they're-
We can make sure this is the only thing.
Okay.
Well, we, yeah.
Um, we have to agree not to put any other resolutions out there, because we are in charge of ourselves, so.
You say that now.
Yeah, I say that now.
All of that is to bear.
Pinky swear.
I don't mean to disparage in any way, shape, or form, but, I, I do want all of us to be responsible to each other and say, hey, we're making a, this is our focus, this is our priority, and that we're focusing on that. And that was one of the things in Jeff City, is trying to keep bills clean without amendments.
At a minimum, we can say as staff, we won't add anything else-
Okay.
-to the March 11th study session agenda. And then, so then it would, you know, those two study sessions, and then it would have a first reading on April 4th, and a second reading on April 15th.
And that gives us an entire month, if we have to, you know, tweak something or adjust something or something like that.
Yeah.
And, and, and worse comes to worse, if in May, we need a, a special meeting to get it approved, we can certainly do that, to come in and just get it on the ballot.
But I don't want to do that.